Good morning, we're going to call the meeting to order. And I would ask, even though he's not on the board, if Mr. Brett, you would pray for us this morning. You do such a good job, and I'll save my comments for later.
Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for the blessings of life, for the blessings of health, wisdom, and peace, continue to guide us in our mission, our noble mission, of enriching lives and trying to help our youngest to achieve their goals. We know that you are with us every day, and we are faithful that you will carry us through any challenge that we have, in your heavenly name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Law, we have preliminary matters, the presentation of resolutions.
We have a handful of them, so we'll be dutiful in getting through all these. I'd like to ask Virgilio Agbanlag, Gil, to come on up and bring your, I see, family and friends. What a wonderful thing. Good to have you all here, okay? Very nice to see you all. Stay right here, okay? Virgilio Agbaglang, known as Gil to his colleagues, lived through the Japanese occupation of the Philippines as a young boy. He subsequently worked as a dog trainer, golf caddy, security guard, and a fisherman. Mr. Agbanlag came to the United States in 1993 after the Mount Pinatubo volcano destroyed his house in the Philippines. And whereas, Mr. Agbanlag began his career as a custodian at St. Petersburg College in 1995 at the Clearwater Campus. After a year, he moved to the Health Education Center where he remained until his retirement. His areas of responsibility included dental services, funeral services, and the EMS departments. And whereas, Mr. Agbaglang has eight children, seven of whom he has sponsored to the United States over the past 15 years. And whereas, Mr. Agbanlag is building a house on his one acre property in St. Petersburg. He likes gardening, especially fruit trees. We wish him much happiness in his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved that St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Gil Agbanlag and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. This resolution adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 18th day of June 2013. Congratulations. Thank you very much for your service. Thank you. Stay right there. We're going to move this. And we're going to get the chairman in here. Let me stand real still on either side. You stay right there. Now we've got a picture. Good. Thanks very much. Thank you. Glad you could be with us today. I would like Stephen Esther to come forward, please. Abby Virginia Tolman. You stay right here. Abby Virginia Tolman began her career at St. Petersburg College 18 years ago in the business office at the Tarpon Springs Campus, later serving as Assistant to the Program Chair on that campus. And whereas, Ms. Tolman has been with the College of Education since it opened and has played an integral role in its growth and success, serving as Executive Assistant to the Dean. And whereas, Ms. Tolman has, over the years, served the college well, assisting students, faculty, and staff in their pursuit of guidance, informal counseling, and information gathering. In addition, she was a part of the President's Initiative to create the Career Service Employment Council in 2011-12. And whereas, Ms. Tolman is a proud Phi Theta Kappa member and graduate of St. Petersburg College, having received both an Associate in Arts and Associate in Science degree here. Later she continued her education, received a bachelor's degree from St. Leo University. And whereas, Ms. Tolman has a warm and generous spirit and deserves much happiness as she travels, spends time with her family and friends, and explores new and exciting endeavors. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Abby Virginia Tolman and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. This resolution adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees of St. Petersburg College this 18th day of June 2013. Here, here. Congratulations. You get to keep that. You get to do. So many deans in this.
One, two, three.
Thanks very much. Good. Thank you. Yeah, right. Thanks. I'd like to ask Kathy Oathout to come up. I saw Kathy here. Where is she? She's right there. Oh. There she is. Congratulations. Whereas Kathy Oathout joined the college in October 2007 as Director of Florida International Museum and oversaw the successful run of Vatican splendors in 2008, which drew more than 93,000 visitors. And whereas, along with her duties at Florida International Museum, Ms. Oathout became the Director of Operations for the Palladium Theater and Coordinator of the college's downtown arts partners, including the Florida Orchestra and American Stage Theater. And whereas, Ms. Oathout oversaw four additional exhibits at the Florida International Museum while the college fulfilled a commitment to keep it operating through 2010. She then coordinated the closing of the museum, finishing with a successful luncheon of more than 250 community leaders and museum volunteers in attendance. And whereas, during her time at the Palladium, Ms. Oathout used her extensive knowledge of St. Petersburg and her contacts in the community to help create and manage the Palladium's top-notch advisory board. And whereas, during her years at the Palladium, Ms. Oathout helped to grow the theater into a major venue in the Tampa Bay area, taking on any job that needed to be done, from dealing with complex staff and budget issues to handing out tickets at the "we'll call" window for the president. Thank you for your help many times, okay? "We'll call" window during sold-out shows. And whereas, Ms. Oathout has maintained a warm and caring attitude and faced every crisis and challenge with grace and patience. We wish her happiness in her retirement as she spends time with her family and loved ones and returns to the Palladium as a volunteer and then as an advisory board member. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Kathy Oathout and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. This resolution adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 18th day of June 2013. Here, here. Congratulations. That's a nice thing. That's great. Here we go. Thanks so much, Kathy. We're doing these in a different order here. Mike Hetu.
Wow. Must I name her?
Yes, okay. Wow. Do not try to log on at this very moment, okay? Or you're on your own if you try to log on. Mike, come on up here, okay? Mike Hetu began working at St. Petersburg College as a computer consultant on the Allstate campus and in 1993 was named Lead Computer Operator. And whereas, Mr. Hetu later was named Supervisor of Computer Operations for the college after working tirelessly to ensure the integrity of the student administration system. And whereas, Mr. Hetu has supervised changes in the college's computer system over the years, including the switch from Regis to PeopleSoft, often remaining on campus overnight to make sure systems were working correctly when the college opened the next day. And whereas, Mr. Hetu always has been a dedicated employee, going above, going over and above what was required to get a job done. He has hung sheets of plastic from the data center ceiling to protect equipment from an approaching hurricane and stayed in the center throughout the storm to make sure nothing was damaged. And whereas, Mr. Hetu has been willing to take on any new processing tasks required to keep systems up and running. He has been the go-to person for data requests and restores data when someone mistakenly deletes it. He will be missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total community hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Mike Hetu and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees this 18th day of June 2013. Here, here. Congratulations. Thanks very much, okay? Very proud of the work you've done for us, okay?
Picture cards on the left. Everybody step forward. We'll step forward.
You guys just get in a little bit too? Three, two, one.
Thank you. We're closing on the end here. I think most of you will want to stay. Oh. Barbara Smith Pitts.
One or three years.
Okay. I'm going to, I have to say some numbers, okay? So we'll be proud of the numbers, okay? All right, good enough, okay? Barbara Smith Pitts came to St. Petersburg College in July 1970, accepting a position as a Key Punch Operator on the Clearwater Campus. And although Ms. Pitts' duties and job descriptions have changed over the years, she has remained a dedicated, loyal, hard-working employee, adapting her skills to new technologies as time has passed. And whereas, Ms. Pitts was named the Outstanding Career Employee in Data Systems in 1990 based on her interpersonal skills, the quality and quantity of her work, and her desire to develop new job skills. And whereas, Ms. Pitts has, over the years, worked on most of the St. Petersburg College campuses at one time or another. Colleagues say she is a kind, caring person who always takes time to be a friend. And whereas, Ms. Pitts, believed to be the longest continuously employed person currently at the college, retires as a Computer Systems Operator at District Office, leaving behind many friends and colleagues who respect and admire her. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Barbara Smith Pitts and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. This resolution approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 18th day of June 2013. Here, here. Congratulations. That's a wonderful job. You see how many people you have in this room, so, okay? Thank you for your job. Very well done. Let's, let's do the quick. Okay. Stay here, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Terrence E. Brett, would you join us here?
Come stand with us, yeah. Joe? Whereas, Terrence E. Brett has played a pivotal role in the history of St. Petersburg College, having been Chairman of the Board of Trustees during the transition from its fifth to sixth president. And whereas, Mr. Brett exhibited exceptional leadership skills during the transition, making sure the process was open, fair, and just, and that proper procedures were followed at all points along the way. And whereas, Mr. Brett has always had the college's best interest at heart. A former student, he served for several years as President of the St. Petersburg College Alumni Association, working to increase membership and the association's assets, which are designated for student scholarships and awards. And whereas, Mr. Brett was appointed to the Board of Trustees in 2008 by Governor Charlie Crist to serve the remaining term of a former board member. He was reappointed by Governor Crist in 2009 and recently completed his four-year term. And whereas, Mr. Brett has earned the respect of his colleagues and others who have worked with him for his polite, patient, and gracious manner, attention to detail, problem-solving ability, and his advocacy for the college and support of its many programs. And whereas, Mr. Brett has brought recognition and honor to the college through his community service as Chairman of the St. Petersburg Chamber of Commerce, Chairman of the Meray and Arts Center, and President of the Eckerd College Presidents' Associates. And whereas, Mr. Brett and his family continue to support the college financially through the establishment, the established St. Petersburg College Foundation Scholarship in loving memory of his son. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Terrence E. Brett and confer upon him the title of Trustee Emeritus. We extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment in the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 18th day of June, here, here. Congratulations, okay? What a wonderful job. Thank you for all you've done, okay? You see how many people you have in this room, so, okay? Okay? Thank you for your job. Very well done. Let's, let's, we'll do the quick.
Okay. Stay here, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Terrence E. Brett, would you join us here?
Come stand with us, yeah. Joe? Whereas, Terrence E. Brett has played a pivotal role in the history of St. Petersburg College, having been Chairman of the Board of Trustees during the transition from its fifth to sixth president. And whereas, Mr. Brett exhibited exceptional leadership skills during the transition, making sure the process was open, fair, and just, and that proper procedures were followed at all points along the way. And whereas, Mr. Brett has always had the college's best interest at heart. A former student, he served for several years as President of the St. Petersburg College Alumni Association, working to increase membership and the association's assets, which are designated for student scholarships and awards. And whereas, Mr. Brett was appointed to the Board of Trustees in 2008 by Governor Charlie Crist to serve the remaining term of a former board member. He was reappointed by Governor Crist in 2009 and recently completed his four-year term. And whereas, Mr. Brett has earned the respect of his colleagues and others who have worked with him for his polite, patient, and gracious manner, attention to detail, problem-solving ability, and his advocacy for the college and support of its many programs. And whereas, Mr. Brett has brought recognition and honor to the college through his community service as Chairman of the St. Petersburg Chamber of Commerce, Chairman of the Meray and Arts Center, and President of the Eckerd College Presidents' Associates. And whereas, Mr. Brett and his family continue to support the college financially through the establishment, the established St. Petersburg College Foundation Scholarship in loving memory of his son. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Terrence E. Brett and confer upon him the title of Trustee Emeritus. We extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment in the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 18th day of June, here, here. Congratulations. Very much. Thank you. Good job. Good job.
Mr. Brett, we have a wonderful art-type gift for you so that you can find a spot to keep us in your heart at all times.
Beautiful.
I'd like you to say a few words if you would, okay?
Okay. It's like we left you right before. Thank you. I will be very brief. It has been a great privilege and honor to serve as a trustee. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time here. And I cannot tell you the respect that I have for everybody in this room. I mentioned in my invocation this morning about the noble mission that all of you have chosen to take on in your lives, the vocation that you chose, to enrich lives and to try to help people achieve their goals. I don't think there's any higher calling in life than the calling that all of you have chosen. I'm especially pleased that we can now, after a couple of years of hard work by all of you, we can start to see us really drilling down to the core essence of what the mission of this college is, which is to work to help students achieve their dreams. And we're seeing that progress now. And we're reading about it in the paper, too, which is also pretty nice. So, again, it's been an honor. I've enjoyed every minute. I have had the great privilege of meeting and working with all of you, and I am forever thankful. Thank you.
Mr. Brett, on behalf of the faculty, I'd like to thank you. It has been a privilege and honor to have you as a board member, and I have stood before you over the last four or five years in some of the college's most trying times, and you have consistently provided steady leadership. And I wish you Godspeed in your future endeavors. Thank you so much.
I just want to say to many of you, didn't know that I met Terry Brett when I was back and I was a kid. I had no gray hair. And then I met him, and I had a lot of gray hair. I met Terry Brett, again, like I said, I was a young man, starting out in my career, and it was a tall, good-looking, well-dressed man who took me under his wing and basically gave me a lot of guidance. And we, I will definitely miss you on this board, but I'll be spending a lot more time with you away from here. I can actually talk to you now, so. I have to call this house and say, oh, this is not about the college, so. I appreciate all you've done for our community, for this college, Terry. And in years to come after this, when people look back on the impact in our community, you're going to be one of the two or three people that they're going to say made a huge impact on St. Petersburg and St. Petersburg College, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
So this thing actually plugs in, eh? Be careful of the top, because once you just have that, okay? All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, I have to say, you know, we're losing, I guess, over 100 years of institutional knowledge today. That's insane in one day. So hopefully, Dr. Law, you got some good people to replace these folks, especially Ms. Patty Smith. I mean, 43, I wasn't even born when she came to this college. Not that she's, I'm not saying that she's old. I'm just saying that I was not born. So, all right, we're going to move on to announcements. And Dr. Law, we have a new board member that we're happy to have. Ms. Bridget Mill joined us, just recently appointed by the governor, to the Board of Trustees. Welcome. I think Dr. Law's going to do kind of a formal announcement to everybody, let them know a little bit about your background.
Thank you. Bridget Mill was named publisher of the Tampa Bay Business Journal in February of 2007. She's a longtime advertising and media professional with more than 20 years' experience and became the first woman publisher in the newspaper's 25-year history. She has worked in almost every aspect of the business, from writing for a full daily newspaper to buying advertising as a media buyer for ad agencies. Ms. Mills has run successful sales departments in both print and broadcast positions. She is a five-time winner of the prestigious Eagle Award, an annual competition within the business journal's parent company, Charlotte, North Carolina-based American City Business Journals. As an advertising director, she consistently ranked in the top three in the company, and as publisher, she's managed the number-one market in the chain for 2010-11 and has had three record-breaking years in a row. The Tampa Bay Business Journal is one of more than 40 weekly business papers across the country, owned by ACBJ, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Advance Publications, boasting sister titles such as Vogue, Vanity Fair, New Yorker, Conde Nast Traveler. Bridges is on the Executive Committee for the Tampa-Hillsboro EDC, the Florida Economic Education Business Hall of Fame Selection Committee, Board of Fellows, University of Tampa, Board of Directors for the Spring of Tampa Bay, St. Petersburg College's College of Business Advisory Committee, and volunteer fundraiser for rock-solid All-Star Cheerleading. She was the St. Petersburg Chamber Businesswoman of the Year for 2011 and Best Moms of the Bay for 2012. She's the mother of a beautiful 17-year-old daughter and is proud to be a Florida Gator.
Go Gators. Got another one, Mr. Lang.
Thank you. Would you like to say a couple of words, just to?
I, first of all, will say I wish I had known that you were going to be reading that, because I would have shortened it. It's kind of embarrassing to sit and have somebody read. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm certain that I will not be filling Mr. Brett's shoes based on the way that the people in the room reacted to his retirement, but I plan to do the very best job that I can for you and to be diligent and to be kind, and I look forward to learning a lot and making a difference at the college. So thank you for having me.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Mercantante asked for just a minute to welcome the trustee.
Sure. Go ahead, Dr. Mercantante. I'm Rich Mercantante, faculty, Senate President. I just wanted to welcome you and know that my door is always open. You're coming in, I think, at a great time at our college. There are a lot of challenges in education, but I think you'll find that both the administration and faculty are very much united on one major point, and that is student success. And we welcome you and your breadth of experience, and thank you so much for being here.
Okay, welcome. Ms. Oliver?
Just a brief comment. I'd like to welcome Ms. Mills to the, to the board and look forward to working with you. Again, a lot of things going on. My tenure on the board is very brief. I just came on in February, so I'm kind of new to it all, so, but it hasn't meant that they hadn't gotten me involved in a lot of things real quick, so.
Be prepared.
Good luck and look forward to working with you.
Don't make eye contact.
If any board members, you guys have anything you want, any comments from the month? We'll move down to Dr. Law. You have any comments?
I just want to recognize, we have two students here today who are Dustin Gunta and Dwayne Ron Sharp. Would you gentlemen stand? These are members of our Student Government Association. They're observing us.
Welcome.
I'm a little confused, as part of SGA or part of your field of studies, public policy or?
Yeah, I'm part of student government.
Come up to the mic.
Come on up. Put on a suit today. I know Dustin, he's.
Yeah, we're very happy to be here. We're sitting in for student government. I just graduated with a bachelor's degree in public policy and pursuing my master's as well in public administration through Barre University and the partnership program.
Yes, sir. Again, we're just here on behalf of student government. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you would have based on the presentation Dr. Vidito has.
Great, welcome.
Dr. Vidito's going to highlight some of the work of the SGA.
Great.
So they're here. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for being here. Can I have a, anything else, Dr. Law?
No, sir.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
So moved.
It's been moved and probably second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And none opposing. We'll move on to, we're going to change the monthly reports, and I think we're going to have, before the monthly reports, we're going to have LumaStream come up.
Yes, they had item, I'll find it on the agenda.
It's item C2.
There it is.
And we're moving it up, ladies and gentlemen, just so we don't keep them here all morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Law, Board of Trustees, it's a great honor to discuss today a partnership which is.
Let the board members know your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
My name is Eric Higgs. I am founder and CEO of LumaStream. We're a high-tech company growing very fast here in St. Petersburg. Extremely excited about what we're going to talk about today, which is a partnership between our company and St. Pete College. It is turning out to be one of the most exciting projects I've worked on in my entire career. Just a few short months ago, Dr. Peter Betzer called me with the idea of a partnership between St. Pete College and LumaStream. We're moving into midtown area, Dome Industrial Park, and of course, St. Pete College is building a new campus there. So we met with Dr. Kevin Gordon, and things got moving very, very quickly. We've worked with Dr. Chapin and Brad Jenkins, and we are launching this very quickly now. What I want to be able to do today is talk about how this partnership works, very brief, touching on LumaStream and what we do and why it makes sense. Sorry, need to, how do we advance the slides here? Okay. Four years ago, I founded LumaStream to solve some of the most perplexing challenges in the lighting industry. We're facing one of the greatest transformations of an established industry in history. It's a huge industry. Every person on this planet needs light. It has moved into a totally different type of technology, and we have set out to basically solve the way power is distributed, lights are controlled, and disintermediate 130-year-old supply chain. What I want to do is talk about who we are briefly, why this partnership makes sense, our agreement between the two entities here, a new facility, what that looks like, and we probably won't have time to actually show us, show you our lighting. Four years ago, the LED lighting.
Great, welcome.
Dr. Vidito's gonna highlight some of the work of the SGA, so they're here. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for being here. Can I have a, anything else, Dr. Law?
No, sir.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
So moved.
It's been moving, probably second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We'll move on to, we're gonna change the monthly reports, and I think we're gonna have, before the monthly reports, we're gonna have LumaStream come up.
Yes, they had item, I'll find it on the agenda.
It's item C2.
There it is.
And we're moving it up, ladies and gentlemen, just so we don't keep them here all morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Law, Board of Trustees, it's a great honor to discuss today a partnership which is...
Let the board members know your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
My name is Eric Higgs. I am founder and CEO of LumaStream. We're a high-tech company, growing very fast here in St. Petersburg. Extremely excited about what we're gonna talk about today, which is a partnership between our company and St. Pete College. It is turning out to be one of the most exciting projects I've worked on in my entire career. Just a few short months ago, Dr. Peter Betzer called me with the idea of a partnership between St. Pete College and LumaStream. We're moving into midtown area, Dome Industrial Park, and of course, St. Pete College is building a new campus there. So, we met with Dr. Kevin Gordon, and things got moving very, very quickly. We've worked with Dr. Chapin and Brad Jenkins, and we are launching this very quickly now. What I want to be able to do today is talk about how this partnership works, very brief, touching on LumaStream and what we do and why it makes sense. Sorry, need to, how do we advance the slides here? Okay. Four years ago, I founded LumaStream to solve some of the most perplexing challenges in the lighting industry. We're facing one of the greatest transformations of an established industry in history. It's a huge industry. Every person on, on this planet needs light. It has moved into a totally different type of technology, and we have set out to basically solve the way power is distributed, lights are controlled, and disintermediate 130-year-old supply chain. What I want to do is talk about who we are briefly, why this partnership makes sense, our agreement between the two, two entities here, a new facility, what that looks like, and we probably won't have time to actually show us, show you our lighting. Four years ago, the LED lighting industry was at its infancy. It was only early adopters, most believe it wasn't viable for a, a light source. Four years later, we're seeing mass adoption. Mass adoption is now taking place, because the light quality and the cost have converged to create a value proposition and payback for the incremental cost of LEDs over conventional lighting systems. Why is this happening? 100-watt light bulb is illegal to sell last year. We're seeing the 75-watt ban this year. We're seeing 60 watts banned in 2014. The light bulb as we know it, the Edison bulb, is 90% inefficient. It's a heat source with a byproduct of light, with the average lifespan of 1,100 hours. LEDs are the future of lighting. The benefits are astounding. One, they're, they save 90% of the power, they have extremely long lifespan if they're quality, they're extremely durable, it's hard to break them, get them to a point where they don't work, they have extremely low output, which reduces HVAC loads, and there's negligible UV damage with those. What we have done is look at the entire industry and created a system that optimizes this technology. We have patented technology in the way power is converted to make it suitable for LEDs, and we combine it in a turnkey system. What we have done is this, what you're looking at on the left is a inside of an LED bulb, say you'd buy at Home Depot. There's hundreds of electronics components, because the power has to be stepped down from high voltage to low voltage, which LEDs run on. We're getting rid of all those electronics and replacing it with an LED array, which you see on the right. We're able to eliminate all kinds of heavy infrastructure and run our lightings on speaker wire. We're wholly unique in being able to do that. We have a power supply that we remote those electronics up to 200 feet away. We get rid of all that labor, all that copper. Complex lighting control systems, this is actually Bonefish, a new one they put in, all the switches on the left, we replace it with a tiny control switch. Simplicity is what we're looking for. We're trying to be the Apple Computer of elegance and product design and installation. So, our solution specifically, as the benefits in this industry, is we're achieving the highest return on investment, the highest energy efficiencies, because we convert it digitally. We're in a digital age. We have the lowest operating cost, because our products actually last, and it's very simple. Light quality is astounding. This is a payback on a large national chain, with the way we do things and the savings we get that other LED solutions don't. We're getting a 1.8-year payback. In this case, there's enough locations to save $40 million over a 10-year period to this chain. The partnership, we are facing some of the fastest growth of any company I've ever seen or heard of right now. Our traction is tremendous. We've also, so we're a rapidly-growing company right here in St. Petersburg. I'm thrilled to be able to have it here and to create the jobs that will result, and the overall ecosystem of creating an entrepreneurial area, much like a mini Silicon Valley. All the potential's here to do that. This partnership is key. We are locating in the Dome Industrial Park Warehouse District. In 2002, I actually bought a warehouse, and I'm also a sculptor, and got established here, and the growth has been really impressive. We, together, we want to create a qualified workforce in this advanced manufacturing training center that provides educational opportunities, but also the opportunity to work in a real company with real-world experience, not only in specifically training for, say, CNC milling, machining-type of jobs, board-level electronics, but to see the effect of how one person's job, even in assembly, can have a trickle-down effect on the efficiencies and operations of an overall company. The things we're contributing to the partnership, we'll work with St. Pete College to create an internship program that could be a model across the state. We will provide skilled supervision on our staff to make sure that the skills that are being created in the educational academic environment, co-located with our facility, actually come and prepare students for high-level jobs, mid, mid-level jobs, machining jobs, and also senior jobs in those kind of manufacturing environments. We have the opportunity to promote the college as a leader in this, and we certainly will in our public relations efforts. St. Pete College will, of course, recruit students and install the proper equipment to provide the training for the electronics and the CNC applications. The program, the curriculum, and the instructions will also, of course, be provided. George Gordon, who's an advisor to LumaStream, actively involved on a daily basis, will briefly go over this facility, what we're creating as an interim facility, and then also where we might go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. It's a pleasure for me to be here, talking about this new facility in LumaStream this morning. I've been involved in the technology community in Tampa Bay since I moved here 12 years ago. We set a lofty goal for our region through, beginning with making the Tampa Bay region one of the top 10 technology economies in the U.S. in the 10-year timeframe. That was 2005. We're coming up on 2015. And we believe the reason that we've never had, we've never made that top 10 list, is that Tampa Bay's never really had its breakout company like other regions have, whether it's Dell in Austin, or you name it, in Silicon Valley, or Deck up in, in the Boston corridor, what have you. I believe LumaStream can be that breakout company for Tampa Bay. So, it's a thrill for me to stand here and, and describe this partnership, which I find very exciting. One of the factors that I think has kept us from having a breakout company is that we've, from many fellow CEOs that, that I dealt with in my prior career, they haven't had the qualified workforce to hire here, and they've literally moved their, their technology teams to the Valley, or to Austin, or what have you. So, I want to say I applaud you, Dr. Law, and your team, for what you're doing to create a qualified workforce for this region in the technology community, not just at the baccalaureate level, but at the certificate level and, and others. So, this is very, very exciting for us. This is our first totally dedicated facility. We'll be moving our, our sales and marketing offices into our, into manufacturing, which are in two different locations, and our power supply manufacturing, which is up in Canada, all into a single location here in midtown. This, this facility is, you may know it as the Silvernail Glass Company, which it was for many years. It's at 2201 First Avenue South, the corner of First Avenue South and 22nd Street. It is a 15,000-square-foot facility, and pardon the, this is as legible as I could make this, but let me, let me go back to the other one for a second if I can. Oh, that, that's quite, I'll do without that. The colors there, we think the architect was, was a little bit challenged in terms of colors. We haven't picked colors for the building yet, so don't, don't judge us on taste for, for color at this point. But you are now looking at the, at the layout from the top down. The, the lower right-hand corner that's angled is the front door of the building that you were staring at by the LumaStream sign on the previous slide. This is a 15,000-square-foot facility, divided about into thirds. The right-hand third, moving from top to bottom, will be offices and collaborative workspace. What you see that look like private offices are actually meeting rooms for collaboration and, and, and private and quiet time. Most of our, our work will be in the open space, in, in a collaborative and open work environment. We will have a product development and a space right to the left of that, that one large office building. The whole center section of the building will be electronic assembly and test for the power supplies, and the far-left-hand section of 5,000 square feet will be dedicated to a St. Petersburg College classroom and our machining and rapid prototyping facility. This is a total of 15,000 square feet. We've got about 2,000 or 3,000 square feet more of mezzanine space. We don't know how long we're gonna be in this facility. We are growing that fast. We've signed a three-year lease with the option to go month-to-month after 24 months, but we could easily outgrow that facility before that, depending on the growth plans. As Eric said, they're just so, they're so off the charts, we're not sure we believe anything at this point, but, but we could only be there for a short time. We're thrilled to have this partnership with St. Pete College, and very much looking forward to producing a very qualified workforce for the, for the midtown area. Thank you.
Now, all I'm gonna do now is show a few pretty pictures, and I'll, I'll give back the podium here. Just to let you know some of the projects we're working on, this is a restaurant in Washington, DC. Our lights are constantly changing on the outside of this facility. We have performed every 100% of the lighting for this restaurant. We've been able to achieve 80 to 90% energy efficiency just off the lighting system, another 30% from a reduction HVAC load. Again, LEDs put out very little heat. This is Bartle Hall in Kansas City. We've been running 250 of our power supplies in here with the lights for almost, almost five years now, early prototypes, with not one failure. I think everybody recognizes this. It's Museum of Fine Arts. We're able to work with Kent Leitaker to bring some attention to the front of the building, because everything across the street is now competing with it, which is wonderful. We signed a three-year partnership with Tampa Bay Rays. We did a bunch of their luxury suites and one of their left-field terrace party suite, powered by LumaStream, so we're very proud of that. It's a Florida cancer specialist. We have healthcare applications for a number of reasons. Our technology is best suited for that, and the quality and adjustment of light based on the welfare of the patients that are in there. Working at Tech Data Cisco Training Center, some neat, interesting, interactive light there. This is an interesting one. This is Comcast Tower in Philadelphia. A different lighting company got this project. They went to Philips Lighting for the power supply that takes the signals based on traffic density in the Philadelphia air, it changes color. Philips did not have the technology. It's the largest lighting company in the world. We do, and we're running that, that particular top of that building. This is C1 Bank Headquarters, and we were able to achieve almost first cost on this because of the savings in HVAC and infrastructure savings, backup generator. It's an amazing space, if, if you haven't seen it yet. That's another view of it. Yes, that is a bank. Just a fun little, creating some ambiance in different places. That's in St. Lucia. This is a Marriott Hotel in DC. This is another restaurant. We're doing all the yogurtologies now. It's also the best yogurt in town. So, this is an example of a company that has game-changing technology, and we're being rapidly adopted, even though we're a small company. We have huge plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. It's a very exciting time, very exciting project for the college, and looking forward to working with you guys moving forward. Any other board members have comments?
Mr. Chairman, can we take the item now and prove the memorandum of understanding?
If we could, can I hear a motion to accept item C2 to approve the memorandum of understanding between LumaStream and St. Petersburg College?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Probably move in a second. All signify by saying aye. None opposing. We have accepted it, memorandum of understanding between LumaStream and St. Petersburg College. Welcome, and thank you so much. We look forward to the partnership. We're gonna move back now to a month of reports. Mr. Lang, do you have a report?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair, trustees, Dr. Law. I'd like to point your attention to, in hard copy, your board materials, the new law summary there on your desk. I have provided a, a short memoranda with some of the updates that are, are key with the new legislation, as well as the booklet, the new law summary booklet. It is up to date as of this morning. I have identified 22 different bills that are impacting the Florida college system. Four of the bills are still sitting with the governor, so we're still anticipating those to be signed into law. When that is done, then this report will go onto the website, the Board of Trustees' website. It will be available electronically. Part of the summaries includes the legislative chart, which you have there on your desk as well. Each of the 22 bills has been enumerated by its title, citation, and a live link to its actual text language, which will be available electronically, the effective date, and then a list of different college departments that are impacted by the legislation. If, I'm sure you'll be hearing about different pieces of legislation impacting academics, students, business, business operations during board meetings. If there's any particular questions on any of the bills, please feel free to, to let my office know.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Gardner. We'll review it, and if you have any questions, we'll definitely get back.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Vidito?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Law. Appreciate the opportunity this morning to share a little bit of information about our student government and our student activities on the Clearwater campus. You've already met Mr. Sharp and Mr. Jinta, but I'd also like to introduce our student activities coordinator, Stephanie Hennington, who is here today. Stephanie, would you stand for us, please? Stephanie is responsible for coordinating all these activities. One of the things that, one of the innovations that Dr. Law introduced was the notion of allowing the students themselves to actually determine where the student activities money would go and the activities that accompanied that. And one of the things that's impressed me most is how responsible the students have been with that money. There are lots of, a wide range of activities in the student activities area, which, many of which are social, but there are also many academic activities. And what I'd like to do today, if I can, to my next slide here, this is the actual budget allocation on the Clearwater campus, and as you can see, it is not insubstantial. The students have developed their own process for distributing that. The process includes an online application. Any staff or student who is interested in proposing a project has to complete the application. They then make a presentation in front of the student government board. Here's an example, however, of selected expenses for you. You can see that there are expenditures for the Veterans Day, International Education Week, Hispanic Heritage Events, also a number of travel activities, including sponsoring students to the Florida Society of Bandologists, where our students competed with graduate students, as well as other undergraduate students, and won an award for their presentation. We've sent students on fossil digging trips. We've sent students to the Florida African-American Student Association. In addition, students have opted to pay for equipment on campus and different things that would enhance their academic programs, including things, and I just threw some examples, like dress forms for the theater department when they're making costumes, Scantrons for students who are pretty stressed out in that final exam week and find themselves without a Scantron sheet to take their final exam. They've provided those to them free. They spent, it's not up there, but $15,000 on a batting cage for our student athletes, both the women's softball team and the men's baseball team, which will actually save the college money, because we currently have to rent time in a batting cage over at the Phillies complex. They've bought photography equipment, spent money on leadership development. We sent students to Gallaudet, the American Sign Language Program, where they actually met some of the people who were mentioned in their textbooks. I think that overall, if you were to review the expenses, you'd be very proud of the way that they spent their money and the activities that they engaged in, and I hope I've given you a little flavor of the kinds of things that they're able to do. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, and I'm sure Stephanie and the students would as well.
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Dr. Vidito.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your report. Dr. Dean Chapin?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Trustees, Mr. President. I'm pleased to be here. I've been here almost a year, so I have a chance to chat with you and want to bring you up to speed on some of the stuff going on in the Science Department. I checked before I came, we serve approximately 6,000 students a year with 46 full-time faculty and probably close to 200 part-time faculty. So, the numbers are pretty, are pretty extensive on five locations. One of the things that I think struck me when I first arrived here is the idea of St. Petersburg College becoming one college. And with that in mind, one of our first projects was to take a look at some curriculum issues, being particularly those courses that are two semester sequences because students can register for one semester on one campus and another on another campus, and they can register for lectures separately from laboratories. And when you start looking at the cost of textbooks and lab books, as you change campuses, we were changing books. And I calculated that an AMP student, an Anatomy and Physiology student, could spend well over $1,000 for books in a year if they were to switch campuses in some of our two semester courses, particularly AMP and, and General Chemistry. So, we put together a cross-campus team of faculty from all the locations and addressed not only that, but the curriculum experience that the students were having in those courses. And I am very pleased to say that those teams came to agreement on a consistent schedule of classes or of topics, schedule of labs, consistent textbook, consistent lab materials, and consistent other course materials, which to the outside person may seem like a trivial deal, but for us in this business, to have creative faculty from five different locations agree on something like that is really a, a pretty exciting thing to have happen. I couldn't be prouder of the faculty's team efforts on these things. They set aside lots and lots of, of past issues to accomplish this thing. And for the almost 4,000 students a year that take our AMP sequence beginning in the fall, there will be consistent resources across the whole institution as well as consistent scheduling. All this done in the spirit of complete academic freedom where the faculty still drives the content of that course and how that's going to be presented. We did the same thing in General Chemistry, which affects about 1,500 students, same sort of thing. We are currently looking, as you, you can see, in the general education area, there are some challenges coming to us from the state. I should not call them challenges. One of my prior bosses called them opportunities. So, there are opportunities coming from the state. In the general education area, we have a general education biology course that lots of non-science majors take. We are reforming that around current trends in science. There's enough falsehoods in advertising. I'm convinced that we could create a biology course just on things that are wrong with commercials that you see on television. So, we're going to take a fairly, fairly novel approach to looking at general education courses. All of these are, our efforts are done by cross-campus teams from all the locations with consensus developed, and I think our students are going to be served very well. On the horizon, we'll be looking at our Biology I and II, which is our science major's first level course. We'll be looking at Earth Science, and also, the state is asking us to develop some general ed courses in chemistry and physics for non-science majors, so we'll be working on that. The second topic here is on the expansion of workforce programs. I come from a recent background of, of being involved with workforce, and one of the most rewarding things that's happened in the first year is the project that you've just heard about, LumenStream, and being able to be a little bit involved with that and assisting in the training needs for that project. But I think for students that come to see us at St. Petersburg College, the vast majority of them are here to get prepared to get a job. In fact, I would say the vast majority of people that go to college today are probably in that endeavor to get prepared to get a job. So, I think we have an, an obligation, particularly in the sciences, given that science-based jobs generally pay well, and there's lots of them out there, to expand our workforce programs as quickly as we can in that area. And we're doing several things. We have an environmental science technology program based at the Seminole Campus that was established a few years ago. It's doing well. It could grow faster, and it will, because we are expanding it to Tarpon Springs beginning in the fall. We'll initially offer the core part of the program at both locations. Seminole has the full program. At Tarpon, ultimately, we'll, we'll offer all three tracks that we have in environmental science, water resource management, environmental resources, and sustainability are those tracks. We are going to develop that program to have built into it state licensed certifications so that students, when they exit that program, will have a state license to enable them to get a job quite quickly. So, that one is, is coming along pretty quickly. We are developing a new nature trail at the Tarpon Springs Campus to, for students to explore the various ecosystems that are there. We will begin, we took a try at beginning summer camps this summer and just got a little bit of late start on it, but next summer we will have summer camps for high school, school students, both to expose them to the environment, but also as a thinly veiled recruitment tool to get them into our program as they're in high school. Biotechnology is a pretty hot area. I was given this by one of my faculty. This is a list of 20 biotechnology companies in the Tampa Bay area that will be attending the BioFlorida Conference this September in Tampa. We will have representatives at that conference to meet with those companies. If I read you the topics of what they did, it would absolutely probably put you to sleep, but it, it ranges all over the range of biotechnology. We're going to develop an associative science program for technicians. It will articulate into a track in our, in our biology program. So, we'll have the full range of introductory techniques covered in the biotech, biotech area. Both programs will have internships, so there'll be hands-on experience. We are moving chemistry and microbiology programs to Seminole. I view chemistry and microbiology programs as workforce programs. Very few people, since I've taught both of those, take chemistry and microbiology as electives for fun. They're usually taking those things because they have a, a specific reason. Our micro course, microbiology course is probably almost 100% of those students are going into allied health programs. And so, that clearly is, is a workforce preparation program. Our chemistry program, probably more than half of those students are intending to be engineers. And so, again, a workforce preparation program. So, we're expanding to a really new, nice lab at Seminole that, have to give kudos to Dr. Oliver for having that, having that available there. We also are expanding in those areas, in all of our areas, the undergraduate research that's going on. We have undergraduate research going on with freshmen through senior students, particularly in our biology areas. So, it's a very active program, and they're, they're finding out some pretty neat things. Our baccalaureate program, in an, in an era of declining enrollments, I think, is an illustration of a, a trend breaker. As you can see, it's been in business since 2010. It has grown initially from the first year of 378 enrollments to over 1,000 enrollments this year. We are expanding the number of faculty. We are developing new tracks. Right currently, it has one general biology track. We will have three tracks in the program as it grows. Biomedical Sciences, Molecular and Cell Biology, and Evolution and Ecology. So, that program is doing quite well. Again, the undergraduate research is, some of the work that the students are doing is, is as good as anything I've heard at the graduate level. And we are going to merge the upper and lower divisions of the Biology Department into one department with one faculty and one continuous curriculum. So, that, that part is coming along pretty well, too. The last of my topics are really the future development, a couple of things. One, which you've heard of, we are involved with the Florida Trade Grant as well as a biomedical devices manufacturing grant through Department of Labor Grants and through the Engineering Technology Program. The Trade Grant, we will train 238 trainees during the, during the course of that grant for fairly high-paying technician-level jobs. We'll train on the order of about 150 in the biomedical devices grant in the next couple of years. So, those are pretty exciting pieces. And the thing about the, the manufacturing portion of that is it fits perfectly with what LumenStream's looking for. And so, we now have an industry partner that will be working with us as we develop employees to, to go into the workforce. And then finally, we are making progress on Bay Pines. You'll hear a little more about that later. We've had a couple of activities to put together a more concrete plan. We will have another meeting of a small advisory group with an architect to get some concept drawings and site maps put together that we will have by the fall. And hopefully, the legislature will be kind to us, and we'll be able to begin that project soon. Be happy to answer questions.
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Dr. Dean Chapin.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no old business items. We'll move on to student success and achievement and information item. Dr. Cooper and Dean Chang.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. Dr. Chang, our Dean of Mathematics, is joining me this morning. And we'd like to give you an update on where we are with developmental education. As I reported last month, we have now had the collaborative lab in which 66 members of the college participated, and these were staff administrators as well as faculty. And we began the process of looking at the new legislation on developmental education and making decisions as to how we go forward. What we did is we began by addressing three, three main questions. What are the things that we need to discontinue doing? What things do we need to start doing? And what do we need to continue doing that's already in place? Two of the main issues associated with what we need to discontinue doing are relying on only placement test results to advise all of our students, because as I reported to you last time, there will be students who can exempt from taking the placement test or developmental education, and therefore, will need to rely on other data to be able to advise them properly so that they can make good decisions. We'll also be discontinuing our current standard 16-week developmental classes because developmental education must now fit into a particular model that accelerates students to move on to college-level courses. Some of the new items, as I've just addressed with advising our students, we're going to have to rely on additional data. This would be things like the high school transcript. Do they have work experience, military experience? What other aspects associated with the student's background will help us to be able to properly advise them so that they can make good decisions. Dr. Williams and her team are working on developing these advising rubrics that will be available to the students as well as the staff in this process. We're offering, we're also going to offer additional developmental pathways because students will have to be able to have options in regards to how they progress if they are in the developmental group. And we're also going to create additional MOOCs, those are those massive online classes that are offered free, so that students can prepare and hopefully move on, as well as build extra success strategies into our gateway courses. Dr. Chang is with me, and he's going to share some examples of what we're doing and piloting and changing in the area of mathematics.
Thank you, Dr. Law, members of the board. As Dr. Cooper mentioned last month, developmental education courses must fit at least one of the four definitions, and the math department has already been using a couple of the definitions, and we are seriously considering looking at mainstreaming a couple of these definitions. The first one that you see is the compressed model, which is completing classes outside of the 16-week model. For example, students would be completing classes in eight weeks as opposed to 16. And in addition to the courses being compressed, we would also like to look at the linked model where students would be asked to sign up for both eight-week classes in the developmental math level. That way, we foster a learning cohort so that students can help each other learn throughout the semester. The other route that we are seriously considering is that of modularization, using adaptive learning coursework with Alex. And what that software allows folks to do is to skip the areas that they already know and only work on the areas that they're deficient in, based on results of the diagnostic test that would be administered on the first day of classes. And each student would have an individual learning plan, and they would work one-on-one with their instructor throughout the semester. And when the software knows that the students have spent a certain number of hours, they will administer progress assessments throughout so that the students can demonstrate that they have actually mastered the material that they're learning. And if you look at the success rates portion, we've actually started, been using Alex in our MAT 0990 Bridge to Success Math Course with a 59.5% success rate compared to developmental math courses as a whole of 54. And this past fall, we actually adopted Alex to use in our developmental math courses on the online modality, and the success rate there has been 51% compared to 44.6 the year prior. And we've started this past year using Alex in some of our face-to-face classes, and as you can see, the success rate is also relatively high, 58.9%. So, bottom line, both routes will allow students to start college credit math sooner. Any questions?
Thank you, Dean Chang. Some of the items that we know we need to continue in regards to moving forward with the developmental education legislation involves our college experience. As you have heard many times before, Dr. Williams and our team of provosts have been leading the path in regards to providing our students with success strategies that begin with the moment they come in our front door with our new student orientation, making sure that each student has an academic pathway or a learning plan, an early alert system that allows us to identify at-risk students early in the semester so that we can make sure they get the help that they need so that they can hopefully be successful. Career planning for our students. Many of them come to us, and they haven't yet made a decision about what their career choice is. And that's important because when students have a goal, they're more likely to succeed and persevere. Also, our out-of-class support is extremely important to ensuring that our students not only spend the time in the classroom, involved with the material associated with a particular course, but then they spend time outside of class in our learning centers to continue that work, either with a cohort of other students, with our tutors, or with their own faculty member. And we have seen great success in regards to this particular approach. So, we know this will become even more imperative as we move forward with this new legislation. Another policy that will be important to continue involves what we call the Student Life Plan Retention Policy. This became active in January of 2013 with our first time-in-college students. And what this allows us to do is to, first of all, begin by setting expectations for our students, sharing with them what we'll do and what we expect them to do, identifying these at-risk students early in the semester so that if they are having difficulty, we can get them the help that they need. It's a case management advising model where our student services team and our academic affairs team come together to make sure that the students' needs are addressed in regards to not only academic but life issues, which could also impact many of our students. It will work with the students and limit their future enrollment to what they have been successful in the past. In other words, if a student has withdrawn from two of their four classes, we don't want them to keep doing that. So, it might be better for them to only take two classes, be successful in those two, and then slowly be able to increase the amount as they are successful. It also requires a success action plan that involves not only an advisor, but also an out-of-class support member of our Learning Center to make sure that they are spending time in the Learning Center and getting the assistance that they require. Another very important aspect going forward with this developmental education legislation involves training and professional development. We have a foundation for training and professional development, but this legislation is pervasive. It will affect many throughout the college. So, there will be college-wide training and professional development that will be not only for staff, but also for faculty and administrators. It will be extensive, and it will be ongoing because we want to continue our progress in improving those areas in which we pilot a particular approach. One of the other aspects associated with this legislation has to do with what are referred to as meta-majors. Essentially, that's an academic pathway, and the Florida college system is recommending eight of these. In other words, we might have students that are interested in the Arts, Humanities, and Design area, or STEM, our Science Technology design area, or STEM, our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, or education, public safety, et cetera. The key associated with each of those academic pathways is to get the students started early and to make sure that they understand, depending upon the particular pathway that they're choosing, what communication and math skills are important or that will support that particular meta-major. So in regards to communication, our ENC or CompOne class is, of course, going to be the key for all the pathways. That will be their starting college-level credit course. In regards to the math courses, however, there may be changes. STEM, obviously, the college algebra pathway is the only pathway. In regards to liberal arts and humanities, however, it might be the Mathematics for Liberal Arts I and II courses without the MAT 1033 or Intermediate Algebra as a prerequisite. In the Social Sciences and Human Services, a statistics pathway may make more sense. So of course, all of this will require that we review and change course prerequisites, possibly. And we're working with Dean Chang and his faculty as we move forward with this particular Finally, next steps, there will be a workshop next month for the Board of Trustees, and developmental education will be one of the topics that we'll be dealing with. Then in October, we'll be updating you on our progress. And then in November, we'll be bringing you our developmental education plan that will be then submitted to the chancellor for approval in January of 2014 with the intent to implement no later than the fall of 2015. We hope to be started before that, if at all possible, because the exempt students or those students who can opt out of the placement test or developmental education will become active in January of 2014. So we want to be ready to be able to properly deal with those students and help them as needed. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to, certainly more than you may feel that you want to know. If I had to guess, this is the item that you will hear about away from the college as it unfolds in your circle of friends and family and contacts. Secondly, it's a big change in the way our mission has served our community. I want you to feel comfortable that we have our sleeves rolled up and are as focused on maintaining the most important parts of that mission. Just imagine, all of that has to get translated to the 17-year-old when he or she shows up to register. So it is not easy work to be done. I think we have the tools. We're going to stick with you. We just want you to feel the, and to give us the support as we move forward. We got all of what we wanted, plenty of flexibility in how to deliver developmental education. We got all of what we didn't want, which is let the student make all the choices. And somehow, we've got to merge those two things. So thank you for your patience on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to ask if I can have a motion to take up item C3, D1, A and B. And then I know Mr. Lang has a report on C1, so we'll come back and take that action item up. So item C3, D1, A and B. Do I hear a motion to accept those items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We move in second. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-opposing, Mr. Lang, we're back to C1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish I had a light presentation for you so that there would be something. But this is just a continuation of what we've been doing and seek to do another year.
Well, I will tell you that Mr. Lang has been more than a competent counsel for the board. I have, I think I have probably taxed him over the last year as chairman, called him a lot, always Johnny on the spot, willing to meet anytime, anyplace, anywhere, including Saturdays. We are just, this is a renewal of his contract as the board legal counsel. I would hope that you found the same thing and that we would move forward with this. Is there a motion to accept item C1?
So moved.
Is there any discussion on item C1?
I agree with your comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
You need to.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-opposing, we're down to item E.
Mr. Chairman, they handed me a note that we failed to take a motion in second to approve the resolutions, fairly mundane matter.
Oh, the resolutions?
The resolutions have to be moved in second.
Okay, we'll move back. Can I hear a motion to accept the resolutions this morning?
Ms. Miller's going to make that motion.
Why? Because you've made too many? So moved.
I'll signify by saying, is there any discussion? Signify by saying aye. Aye, non-opposing, we're down to item D. I think it's E. Right, E, yes.
These are the grants. Did we do D? Yes.
Yes, we did, D1, A and B, the grants. I mean, okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. The capital improvement plan, which is the first item on the agenda here under item E, is the vehicle with which we request construction monies. Every year, we go to the legislature with this request. Each five years, we have a five-year survey. We submitted that five-year survey last year, and then every year, we update that survey, making additions, deletions, tweaks here and there to update that legislative request. And the crux of the request, the capital improvement plan, is the five priorities that you see before you now. Those priorities, as we've identified them this year for ourselves, is always the general renovations, remodeling is always the first thing we request. That $6.1 million is through a complicated formula that we developed. The important component is that, once that gets to the state, the DOE and all the folks up there, they jumble all those numbers with all the other 28 or 27 colleges, and then they take a legislative number, or a number to the legislature based on the renovations, remodeling. The second component is the desperate, almost becoming desperate, need for a new student services building at the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus. That $1.6 million would just get us started in that process. It would involve likely the demolition of a good portion of, if not all, of the oldest building on our college campuses, that being the admin building at St. Pete Gibbs. That total project budget would be about $16 million. This would just get us started with the planning component of that. The third item is the student support building, student support services and library building at the Clearwater Campus. That project is currently funded, but this with some in-house funding. This request would simply replace that funding and allow us to do some more other things with the money that's been currently appropriated to that. The fourth item is the health education annex building now at the Health Education Center. It's a four-story building currently occupied only on the first floor because of the need for extensive renovations on the second, third, and fourth floor of that 50,000-square-foot building. We're asking for $2.8 million for that renovation. And then finally, the marine science item that Dean Chapin spoke about earlier, we've already had the appropriation for the first $2.5 million. We're asking for the last 60% of that project to give us close to $6 million project budget. The total request to the legislature for those five items is about $20.3 million, our total overall request. And this year, CIP has another $2 million worth of very small miscellaneous items, most of which are challenge grant requests for matching funds. So the total request overall is $22 million to the legislature this year. And that is, kind of summarizes the capital improvement plan. If you wish to take both items at the same time, I can talk briefly about the next item.
Mr. Chairman, may I, can I take a moment of privilege here? We have two new board members who haven't been through this part of the cycle yet. Can we take just a second to give a little more context? Okay, and it'll make a great deal more sense. Would you pull up the attachment that goes with 7E1A? I want to see that spreadsheet. There you go. For the request for facilities money from the state, we request money in one of three, in each of three areas: renovation projects, remodeling projects, new construction projects. As you see, we develop a list of projects, and then that spreadsheet will go out for five years. Scroll it so that we can just get a picture for the years four and five, if you would. Okay? Focus, if you would, then, back on the upcoming year. Come back to, who's driving here? Anna, okay. We've got to come a little bit more, please. Okay, so in the 14, 15, a little bit more, I want to see the priority listings. So come all the way to the edge, if you would. Thank you. You have a list of projects, and they're all worthy projects, and some have more criticality and some have less criticality. Our recommendation to you is, nobody gets all you want. In past years, you might even hope for the $20 million we're requesting. As I have mentioned on several occasions, the state is doing cash management on previously committed projects now. There's essentially no new money flowing through. Nevertheless, we must send in a list to the State Department of Education. It compiles a list. That list then is forwarded to the governor's office. The governor will make a recommendation after the first of the year for capital projects. Your priorities, as outlined on this list, are what drive, what get everybody's attention when it leaves us. So these are the five priorities that we're recommending to you in each of the three areas. You want to have something in each of the areas so that you never know what will get funded, you never know where the monies will come from the legislature or the governor, what their priorities might be, and those sorts of things. We think we've covered the waterfront. It's vitally important that a project be listed, though. Prior governors, and especially this governor now, is saying, not only does it have to be on your list, not only does it have to be vetted by your board, it really needs to be in year one on your board priority. I think he vetoed a number of very meritorious projects that had been pulled forward by legislators from years two, three, and four. And he vetoed those, saying, no, the process requires the boards to do that. So, Mr. Chairman, I simply want to indicate that there's a process that goes to this. It's a much bigger list. We try to keep a list that we can be quick on our feet if new monies appear. But the five projects we're recommending to you are the ones that would go forward.
Yeah.
Hope that helps.
Yep. Any questions, board members? Thank you.
Okay.
Any change order, it's just a simple one.
Yeah, we need a motion then on both of these.
Yeah, can we have a motion for items E1 and 2?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll signify, any discussion? I'll signify by saying aye. We're on to administrative matter, human resources, items G1 and personnel report. I think we can just take all of these up except for the marketing and networking one, right, Dr. Law?
We'd like to make a presentation, I think. I think this board has asked us on this couple occasions.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we take items G1, A, B, and C, and item 3, oh, just G1, A, B, and C?
Yeah, do that.
Is there a motion? It's been moved, second?
Second.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're down to marketing and social networking update.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President, I'm Patty Jones, Vice President of Human Resources and Strategic Communications. And I'm here to talk to you specifically about what's going on with strategic engagement through social media. Social media marketing is a team effort. While we are in the platforms represented here, some of them we are very engaged in, some of those we are only putting our toes into the water. But all of these, to be successful, will take the marketing and public information department, all of our faculty and staff, and our students to help leverage and grow these. Strategic social media marketing is part of an overall digital marketing plan. We actually are working with consultant Orange Theory that I mentioned to you at a meeting a few months ago, and she has been working with us on developing a more comprehensive digital marketing plan. So what's new? Facebook, of course, is the big one in social media. And something we've started doing recently is investing in promoted posts. Promoted posts means we pay to post things in the news feeds of those who have liked our page or the friends of those who have liked our page. So on the left side, you see an example of a Facebook-promoted post versus a traditional post, and how much more we get on views and likes and shares on the left side. Now, the cost of these varies. It depends on keywords and how many other people are bidding to use those keywords in the Facebook world of promoted posts. The cost of the one on the left for over 100,000 views was about $300. So we can get a lot more for our money here than maybe some of the traditional advertising What else is new? We started last week a photo and video contest. It's designed to enhance student engagement, help us develop a portfolio of student-produced content, and increase traffic to our websites and our social media sites. As of yesterday, we had received 23 photos and three videos. The competition is going through about the end of July. We are going to have public voting for two weeks leading up to the new term, and the winners in both the video and the photo categories are going to be announced the very first day of classes for the fall term. So what else are we doing? It's not just Facebook, and like I said, it's not just the marketing and public information office. Right now, Orange Theory is working with Vice President, Senior Vice President Tanja Williams and the provosts on a coordinated communication plan for students that will go across digital platforms and integrate the various messaging to students, much of it that has to do with retention efforts. We also are going to be expanding our network of what we call super-users, faculty and staff liking things on Facebook, sharing, retweeting, commenting, blogging. And something else that we're excited about starting this fall, probably about the second week of the term, are online listening posts. We've already established the model for listening posts in person. Dr. Law has had them, Dr. Cooper and others have done this. But instead of being in person on a campus, this is going to be scheduled times online, either via Facebook or blog. We will announce it, we will have topics out there, we will encourage feedback, and we will offer scheduled, real-time responses at these listening posts. We know we need to have more student contributors to our social media presence for it to expand and frankly, to have credibility in our target markets. So we are going to be working very hard to expand student contributors to blogging. And as a matter of fact, the marketing office is going to, again, be working with provosts on that model. We do expect to have very minimal filtering of those, for instance, profanity, things like that, we would expect to filter. But we want students to believe and see that we are serious about candor and that we do want transparency to be allowed in the student contributions. We already have people doing a lot of things, as you see. This represents groups already active in social media throughout the college. So let's talk a little bit about some metrics. Where do we rank compared to our fellow colleges? As you know, there are 28 colleges in the state college system. These are the top 10 that are active on Facebook. And as an aside, I want to mention, as I was going through and looking at all of these, there's actually two or three that still have no Facebook presence whatsoever. On this chart, you see that St. Petersburg College is number six, and a very exciting thing happened about, shortly before noon on Friday, we actually surpassed the 10,000 likes milestone. Again, Facebook is the big one. LinkedIn and Twitter are two others that were growing. Now, you look at these numbers and you see they're in the thousands. This is our YouTube channel. So since 2009, 1.8 million views on our YouTube channel. YouTube, in general, is right behind Google as a top search engine. So we're going to continue to leverage this. And also, we want to encourage even more organic content from students to feed this. And also, we want to encourage even more organic content from students to feed this. This is an absolutely emerging field. In May, about 3,000 marketing professionals were asked, how long has their organization been using social media marketing? And most of them, like St. Petersburg College, said less than two years. So we have a good foundation, we have a long way to go. What else is happening? Well, we have a marketing and public information director vacancy that we are looking forward to filling very soon. As a matter of fact, we have five people coming in for the first round of interviews next week. And we hope that we might even be able to bring the recommendation to you at the next board meeting. We are seeking somebody who brings to St. Petersburg College a record, a high-level record and expertise in the digital media and social marketing realm. Questions or would you like to see any of our, our Facebook or YouTube?
Questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, good, thank you.
So. We're taking up human resources, marketing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board members, Dr. Law. Quick update on the, the financial status. We're, we're quickly approaching the end of the year. And I can say that even though, as you've seen now for several months, our, our revenue is down due to enrollment, I say without any reservation, we will finish the year within, within budget. We've been very diligent in bringing our spending below our, our trend line as well as our, as our revenue drops. And you can see it continues to, to be very healthy in terms of, we still have on the bottom of your chart there, you see six, about 6.5 million in, in surplus going into the final month. We still have about $6 million of revenue that will come to us from the state. So we feel we have, we're in a good position to, to end June, again, within budget. I want to point out two things. If you look up where the two cells there are highlighted in yellow, one is two, about 2.15 million. Our stabilization reserve, which we, we put that money in our budget every year to, just in anticipation of contingencies and so on. I do not anticipate spending any of that. And this will be about the sixth consecutive year that we have not had to use that. The other, about 1.6 million you see below that is really prior-year revenue that has been used to pay out prior-year purchase orders that we will move over to the revenue column. So that will also add to, to our financial health by the end of the year. So overall, I think we're looking very, very good. And we'll have the closeout for you next month.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead and?
I'll go to the next item, Mr. Chairman.
Take the, hold up here, we can, we can cover this one.
The write-offs?
Yeah.
This is the write-off for our, our new board member. I, let me just explain that. We, anytime during an economic decline, our financial aid grows dramatically. And you can see on this chart, the, the blue bars indicate the total amount of financial aid that's been paid out, which you can see in the highest year, there's well over $160 million in one year. And as we do that, though, we, there are a certain number of students who will get financial aid but will not complete the requisite period of time they need to stay in a course. And if they drop out before that point, then we are required to pay that money back to the federal government. We then are left with trying to recoup or collect some of that money. This, this year, 2011, is the year that we're talking about now, that says 1.6 million. It actually started well over 2 million. We've collected about 450,000 of that. So we have about a 30% success rate on, on collections. But this 1.6 million, we are going to write off this year. You can see from this chart, first of all, that, that the total amount we write off is generally less than 1%. We are already seeing, because of some of our, our, the programs that we've put in place in the last couple of years, we're already seeing a significant downward trend for next year, which you're seeing a projection there under 2012, the 2012 year. So with that, we're, we're asking your approval to take this off our books. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
How do we go about collecting this? Do we do that internally or do we turn it over to an agency or how do we do that?
Both. We, we do some initial contacts in-house, but then after, if we don't have any success, then we do have a collection. Agency that we contracted out to.
Not more than you want to know, but part of the write-off is what we anticipate, the payment to the collection agency as well. So there's about 300,000 of that, that is what we pay. Right. To drill a dry hole.
Okay.
Need a motion on that one, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so we need to take a motion on items. G. 3. B.
Set lift.
Second.
Probably move a second, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And on opposing, we're on academic matters, item obscured. How are you?
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Law.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Jackie Skritt, I'm the Executive Director of Grants Development. And it's my pleasure today to update you on some of the exciting and wonderful programs that we've been working on over the last six to nine months that are put together to fund specifically all of those initiatives that we've talked about today around our strategic initiatives for the college. Every single one of these grants is directly tied to student success, faculty support, and workforce development and those types of activities. I'll share with you some of the grants that we've recently been awarded, the projects that we've applied for and are currently awaiting announcement on, and those that we're working on through the application process. Mr. Chair, about a year and a half ago when I started, you said you wanted a Gates grant. Well, we have our first Gates grant. We were awarded a minimal award, but at $100,000 for the adaptive learning project. And what's exciting about that is it's a national study program. There were only 10 awarded in the United States, and we were one of those awarded. If you don't know what adaptive learning technologies are, they're data-driven tools that help faculty mold coursework around individual students' abilities. And so what we've proposed to do is to pair up with publisher McGraw-Hill and offer adaptive learning technologies through our math, our developmental and gateway courses in math and in composition, so that we can assess how the students are learning and how the faculty are adjusting curriculum around that. So we're excited about that. That's a two-year grant. And Duke Energy is a new announcement, is a half a million dollars for solar panels at our Clearwater and Seminole campuses. We anticipate that solar technology to save us about $16,000 in energy savings each year. And the good thing about that project is the first state coll, where the state, First State College awarded that grant, previously known as Progress Energy, obviously. But it's a, we've applied for this in the past three years. And so we, we got it this year, we're very excited about it. Not only does it provide us energy savings, but our students are able to learn on this technology as well as our community members and businesses in the local area. We were awarded, I believe, last week, the Florida Department of Education Office of Domestic Security Emergency Notification Grant. This is to provide the two-way handheld radios for our campuses to have direct connection with emergency management. So we'll have a quicker response in case of emergencies. That's an excellent grant that we'll be spending through by the end of this month. The $15,000 American Association of Community Colleges 50-plus grant is related to our older students and helping the, those that are in the healthcare field to get an advanced technical certificate in health information technology. So improving their skills in the, to better respond to the electronic medical record systems. And then the Workforce Florida Quick Response Training. I wanted to highlight this one because you'll probably see multiple of these. This one's on behalf of Power Design. Community colleges are the only ones eligible to apply for these grants through Workforce Florida. We are, serve as the fiscal agent to the companies who have a immediate hiring need and therefore, training that comes along with that. So we support them in accessing this funding. And Power Design is looking to hire 134 individuals over the next, I believe, year, two years that will need quick response training to help fill those, fill that gap. So you'll see that, you'll see those frequently. Those are the ones that we've been awarded. The ones that we've applied for and are currently awaiting award, the latest one is the Title III Strengthening Institutions Program through the U.S. Department of Education. This particular project is the embodiment of everything that we've been trying to accomplish through the college experience. What's exciting about this project is it does fund all of those things. We focused on three particular areas on that grant in enhancing the enrollment process, where we would be enhancing and redesigning, or enhancing the My Learning Plan, moving forward further on integrating career and academic advising in the student coaching system, and redesigning the Student Success Course, as well as the New Student Orientation as part of that process. We'll also try to seek to enhance teaching and learning. And this isn't simply professional development, but what we've, the strategy that we've taken on this particular part of the proposal is to engage faculty in developing the learning resources available to students. This is directly tied to new legislation put forth at the state level related to developmental education. And we said what we would try to do is to develop these learning resource toolkits for the top 20 courses that have the highest enrollment and lowest success rates. And how can we modularize those courses with the help of faculty to say, okay, students are not having, you know, they're, they're enrolling in college-level courses now and they're not quite ready, but we've got the, the faculty member and the student that now has an outside learning resource to take advantage of. It can assess them upfront to say, where am I deficient in my studies? Where do I need to focus a little bit more on that particular course so, so I can succeed and complete the course? So we're doing that, we propose to do that for 20 courses, as well as some out-of-class challenges that students might face, time management, things of that nature. So it's, we'll put that on a virtual learning resource platform through our learning management system. But what we like about that is that it's faculty and support staff developing those courses. It provides an ownership opportunity and really engages our faculty and staff in delivering those services. And then the third part is the, the integrating support systems and communication. We talked about communication being a big piece. One of the strategies under that part would be to assess our business plan and communicate current communications and establish a customer relationship management system. So the funds would help to support that CRM. And we look forward to hearing an award on that, hopefully in September. This is a highly competitive grant. They're anticipating upwards of 400 applications and they'll be awarding 21. The Developmental Education Massive Open Online Courses, the MOOCs grant. This is a statewide grant. It's for one year. And we applied as a single applicant to enhance our first-ever developmental, developmental math MOOC. We're the first college in the state of Florida to develop a math MOOC. So we're looking to enhance the math and create a, an additional MOOC for reading and writing for students. We have several others that we've applied for, Nursing Workforce Diversity, the Common Core State Standards through the state to help train in district teachers on the new Common Core State Standards. That's a statewide initiative. STEM scholarships for students pursuing programs of study in the stent, the science, technology, engineering, and math areas. I wanted to highlight the Green Living Demonstration Center because this is an earmark grant through Congressman Young. We've been working on for several years. It's a transitional grant from the, from Pinellas County Government, Board of County Commissioners. But what we like about this is we've paired ourselves with an organization called Bauer Foundation that's created a new technology for HVAC geothermal systems and excavation for creating a basement in Florida. And so we want to be able to create this green home that, that displays the different technologies, renewable energy resources, including what a basement could do and provide in the state of Florida. And then the Perkins Grant, which is an annual grant that supports our AS, AAS degree-seeking students in a variety of different ways and faculty development equipment and whatnot. The application stage, we're currently working on four applications through the Department of Labor Trade Adjustment Assistance Community College Career and Training Grants. This is the grant that we awarded last year for $15 million as the lead of the Florida Trade Consortium. What the DOL seeks out of these grants is that these are business-driven, that we're establishing shorter-term certifications that tie to advanced degrees and how we're sharing curriculum, how we're working together. And so you'll see that we have four consortium applications being prepared, two of which are state, two of which are national. One statewide consortium for public safety and homeland security is being led by Valencia College. There's 22 colleges involved in that one. The Health Information Technology is being led by Indian River State College. There are 16 colleges involved in that one. Orthotics and prosthetics, we have a combination of community colleges and universities. And the supply chain management, which is being led by Broward College, I'm sorry, orthotics and prosthetics is being led by Century College in Minnesota. The supply chain management grants being led by Broward College with a consortium of eight community colleges across the United States, along with seven major universities, including MIT, Northwestern, Georgia Tech, and Michigan State University. This pot of funds is worth $25 million this year. It will be a huge get if we get any one of these. Again, these are highly competitive, but we're really excited about them. And they're coming due July 3rd, so we've been very busy. The last slide I wanted to show you really quick is kind of a culmination of what we've accomplished over the last year and a half. On average, we've been work, the, we've had about $4 million in grant awards. And with the full department being implemented in 2012, we've increased that up to nearly 25 million. We highlighted the, the yellow bars, the, the Florida Trade Grant gave us $15 million. So it really is a boost where that bar is so high. But only a portion of that was awarded to our trade partners. So we're really looking at an administrative implementation of a little under 15 million. And all the grants that I, I highlighted earlier that we're waiting award is worth nearly $6.2 million. So that's something, if we're awarded all of them, we'd be looking at for 2013, 2014. But we're only, we only, shouldn't say only, we have an 81% success rate in our grants. I think the average is around 47%, so we're doing pretty good. We're currently managing 24 grants. And what I like about what we've done in the Grants Department is we've certainly diversified our portfolio. We're not heavily reliant on federal grants. We, of course, do seek those out. We seek out state funding, local funding, and we're really working hard to get some of those private foundation funds as well. Any questions?
None, I don't think you have any.
Good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So if there are no other questions, we are taking up item H2 as an action item, need a motion. Right? It's been moved and second.
Second.
By Mr. Oliver. Is there any, no discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On the post. There's no board trustee manual changes, so we don't have to open up the, the item doing this, Dr. Law?
No, sir.
Okay. And we're down to our final thing, which is the presidency evaluation. I have like a statement here, but I will tell you guys, I'm probably not going to read this whole statement. I'm just going to talk about it. And, and then we also have to take up, because of some legis, some court cases that just passed, that just went through, we have to take an action item here before we finish this item as well. I would just say that, you know, we have evaluated the president. I would just say that, you know, we have evaluated the President. And I will tell you that I think Dr. Law has done a, a very good job of making sure that we have gotten back on focus on what the real issues are here at the college, which are related to making sure that we're focused on the student and making sure the student is successful here at the college. I will also tell you that I think he's done a very, very good job of bringing in key staff and other folks to make sure that we, we, we're driving this train forward. In terms of planning and budgeting, I, I will tell you, I, I think we are probably as good or better than we ever have been before, since I have been on the board, especially with the tough economic times that we've had to deal with, especially dealing with the legislature. There is not a cash-rich legislature that, you know, that you, that we used to be able to get a lot of money from. And PICO and all these other things have, have dwindled up. I think he's done a very good job of making sure that in Tallahassee, we are not only ahead of the pack, but getting our fair share. And then, you know, our statutory duty is, is limited to making sure that we evaluate the President. I will tell you that he has done a great job, I think, and I think Dr. Mercadanti and some other folks would tell you that he's done a great job working with the faculty and the Faculty Senate and other folks, and making sure that, again, that we stay focused and move down the path of success. We are finally starting to see some things take hold that I think we would not have, have seen take hold, especially with the My Learning Plan for each student, and SLS and other courses, and other things that help these students to be successful. We heard even today about, Dr. Cooper was talking about how young people can start math earlier if they test, and test out of some of this stuff. And we have been very innovative in making sure that, and it's due to his leadership and his staff's leadership, that, that we have figured out how to get young people or persons who are in, at St. Petersburg College back on track if they have a deficiency. And it's not a nine-month situation or a semester situation. You can take the portions and keep taking the test until you pass it. And if you pass it, you can go into, you know, the maths and the writings and the readings that you need to. So, I will tell you that I'm making a recommendation this morning that we extend Dr. Law's contract by year. And that would extend his contract to June 30th, 2016. And in that motion, now, Mr. Lang, do I have to read this Florida statutes?
Probably just the synopsis of what's there. I think you have something in italics that probably.
Yes. Okay. So, I'm making a motion that we extend Dr. Law's contract to June 30th, 2016. And in that motion, a requirement that severance pay be, severance pay provided by, provided may not exceed an amount of greater than 20 weeks of compensation, a prohibition of provisions of severance pay when the officer, agent, or contractor has been fired for misconduct as defined in, in statute 443.03630 by the unit of government. So, I'm making the motion that we, we extend Dr. Law's contract by one year.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing, Dr. Law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. And we will move to the President's Report if you have anything.
No, sir. We have one more item in business this morning. We have the St. Pete Collegiate High School. We have to adjourn and.
Oh, okay. Well, let's adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
And then, we'll open the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Trustees, Dr. Law. I'm Star La Metz, the Principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this morning to share some highlights, to give you an update on our site visit for reaccreditation, and to bring forth a proposed budget for your review and approval. Those are our proud graduates, the graduation. A few highlights under the area of scholarship. You can see our current high school graduation data there. I do predict that we will have 100% high school graduation rate by the end of the summer term. Also, we predict a 97% AA graduation rate by the end of the summer term. Our seniors continue to do well in terms of scholarship dollars. Our 6010 seniors earning $2.5 million in scholarships this year. A first for the Collegiate High School. We had two seniors who participated in the SPC Honors College Collegiate Research Conference, and they were two of nine students who also presented at the regional conference. We had two of our students who were recognized at the St. Pete Gibbs Awards Program for mathematics awards, two earned writing awards, others were recognized for their leadership and service. We're very pleased that we had several students inducted into PTK this year. That's the highest number we've ever had. Our seniors were accepted at a variety of colleges and universities, both in and out of state. We have some that are staying right here at St. Petersburg College, two in the Merit Program, one going into the nursing program. And some notable colleges are Drexler, University of Chapel Hill, North Carolina, and Embry-Riddle. Five of our students will be studying abroad for a year through Rotary, and we have six of our students leaving this weekend for the trip to Rome. FCAT came out recently, and as you look at the data, you can see that we continue to excel in reading. We would like that to be 100%, and we're going to continue to work hard to get that up there. Geometry, if you notice, last year, there were not any scores. It was a norming year. And this year, we have 100% pass rate. All but two of our students scored the highest level, a level five. And in FCAT writing, we, again, we have very high scores, a little lower than the previous year. They changed the scale a little bit. However, we were very pleased. We are first in Pinellas, and we exceed the state averages as well. And for the first time, the two collegiate high schools we benchmark against, Okaloosa-Walton, who's always number one, we, we exceeded them in writing this year. The reading scores are not available, as well as Clark Academy. So, although our writing score is a little less than we would hope for it to be, we're pleased with our results. Another focus area for us at the Collegiate High School is leadership. We feel it's critical for our students to be leaders now at the Collegiate High School, as well as in the college, as well as developing the skills they need for future success. Three of our seniors served as presidents of a club or organization for the college, one serving as the president of Phi Theta Kappa under her leadership, and of course, with the support of her peers. The chapter won five awards. She was recognized as Most Distinguished Officer, and another collegiate high school member was nominated and recognized as Most Distinguished Member. Our students also serve in collegiate high school clubs and organizations. Service is critical for our students. Not only do they need it for their bright future scholarship hours, but I feel it's very important for them to understand the importance of service. And so, our seniors gave over 15,000 hours of service. One of our students coordinated the Junior Achievement Program for our campus. Our students giving over 1,600 hours and impacting 84 Pinellas County Schools' elementary In late March, we had the opportunity to have a SACS Advanced Ed Reaccreditation Site Visit. The purpose of the visit is to help us increase and sustain student learning, as well as to continually improve our effectiveness and efficiency as a school. The staff did a self-assessment, and that self-assessment, along with our student performance results and stakeholder data, was sent to the visitation team prior to the visit. Their role is to come and validate that what we say we're doing, we are actually doing. Our stakeholders said, this is a wordle of what our stakeholders said when they came for the site visit, the larger and more bold-faced words are words that were repeated often. The site visit is based on five standards: purpose and direction, governance and leadership, teaching and assessing for learning, resources and support systems, and using results for continuous improvement. The scale is a one to four. Most schools score between two and three, so we are pleased with these scores. Especially strong were the resources and support systems we have in place for our students to excel, and the vision, mission, core values driving all the decisions that we make at the Collegiate High School. Our teaching and assessing for learning is a little lower than we had hoped it would be. That's because they used a brand-new observation tool. We were the first school that they've used it online, and they were learning it, and so they said that the results were a little lower than they anticipated that they would be. But their comments indicated they thought we were doing a great job. And in fact, our teachers could teach others how to implement Common Core because we were doing a great job with critical thinking skills and rigor. At the end of every site visit, we get a report, and this is a highlight of the report, some of the powerful practices noted, is the relationships we build with our students. We know every student, we interact with every student, we advocate for them, and we individualize learning to maximize their success. And then, also, that the school leadership and staff commit to shared values, common beliefs about teaching and learning, and that we provide a challenging, equitable program for all of our students that includes achievement, thinking, and life skills. As a part of a SACS visit, every school must have a minimum of at least two recommended actions from the site visit. And so, our two recommended actions are for us to more formalize our, our professional development plan. Although we had a plan in place that addresses the needs or requirements of Pinellas County Schools and the college, as well as a school-wide initiative and individual initiatives, they wanted a more formally-prepared plan, so I will be working on that this summer. And although our technology needs are met, and they praised us for the use of technology, they want me to create a needs assessment for technology and develop a technology plan. So, I will do that. The recommendation was for reaccreditation for the next five years. It is a five-year cycle. Reaccreditation is offered in June and in December, so I anticipate getting the formal letter in June. Are there any questions on this portion? Okay. Then, what I would like to do is go forward with the budget for, hey, help me. I thought the budget would be up there for you to look at. Can you help me get back? The budget should be up in just a moment, but I'm going to maybe highlight a few areas so we don't lose any valuable time. You will notice when you see the budget that we have an increased amount for computer leases. We do have some computers coming up for refresh, so that is a little higher than normal. Also, in professional services, we have three years' worth of expense allocated for audit. If we go for three years, it does save us a little bit of money.
Starla, hang on here.
I am. Okay, there we go. Okay. All right. So, there you go. And I'm going to scoot it down just a bit. You can see our total funding sources there? And then, I'm going to scoot it down just a bit so you can see the total budget. And then, you can see that we still have a very healthy reserve fund available for Are there any questions on the budget?
Again, with two new board members, let me be sure we just put a little bit of context. This budget comes to us through the Pinellas County Schools, for the most part. We are funded at what level of FTE from?
We, we are the same level as Pinellas County Schools. It's approximately $4,600 per student, comes from the state to the district. We invoice the district, and they send me a monthly check. That goes into the college accounts for the Collegiate High School.
The, the county holds back a couple, 5%? Is that what they get?
2% because we're a high-performing charter school. Normally, it is a 5% administrative fee.
So, their funding comes to us from the schools, and that's the charter school model in Florida, so. Mr. Gibbons has taken a leave. Since I'm not the chair, we, we have two board members who can, in fact, make a motion. We can take a vote. I'll, I'll look toward.
Well, just one, one comment, I may be, maybe for future on this, it might be good to see kind of this year, what, what we're asked to approve versus a comparison to last year.
Agreed.
That's the thing that I kind of see missing here.
Okay.
I mean, I'm kind of approving this off of faith that last year's or this year's was prudent in, in the way it was done, so.
I would be happy to let you know that it is very closely aligned to last year. Our expenses are a little higher because we have a few more students that are coming into the program. The amount that we're taking from our Budget Stabilization Fund is just about equal to what we had last year. So, it is a, it's, it's a very accurate budget based on last year and what we actually used. And I do it in concert with the accountant, and it is reviewed by Vonda as well. So, we, it is very similar. I'd be happy to do that for you next year.
Okay. You know, based on that, I would, in fact, Mr. Gibbons is not here. Oh, there he is.
He's good.
What was that? I'm sorry. You ready?
I think so.
Make a motion. Make a motion, Mr. Oliver?
Move that we accept the budget.
Second.
I'm probably moving second. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposing. We pass the budget.
Thank you very much.
Ms., Ms. Metz, thank you for all you do, and this Collegiate High School continues to be one that sets the standard for the rest of the state. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's no other business, we will close the Collegiate High School business, and we will see you next month.
Thank you very much.